Press the Start Broadcast button on the Go To Webinar Control Panel to allow all attendees to hear you. This system will notify you once you begin your broadcast. All attendees are in Listen Only mode.
Good morning. It is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. We will start the committee agenda with Committee Number Two, Public Works. And parliamentarians, we're going to read these, I think we're going to go to Number One and then Number Six, so we can get the chief out of here pretty quick. So let's start with Number One.
Yes, sir. Item one is a resolution approving a contract between Shelby County Government and Life Assist, Inc., for emergency medical supplies for the Shelby County Fire Department at a cost not to exceed $204,470.85. This contract will commence upon execution through June 30th, 2025, with the option to renew for two additional 12-month periods, beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, and July 1, 2026, through June 30th, 2027. This item requires expenditure of FY 2025 Fire Enterprise Funds in an amount not to exceed $204,470.85, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. I have moved the item. I am a committee of one. I don't believe we need a second. Chief?
Go on, Commissioner. Thanks for having us. This item will allow us to stock our EMS equipment and fire equipment with medical supplies and drugs and all those things. Takes us to be proficient in EMS.
All right. Thank you. Since I'm the only one here and seeing no one in the queue, we'll take this item to a vote. Looks like both of us have voted, so we'll tally the results.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Bradford and Wright. We have two aye votes.
Thank you. That item will go down with a favorable recommendation. Let's jump over to Number Six.
Item six is a resolution approving the purchase of an emergency response fire pumper for the Shelby County Fire Department from Sidons Martin Emergency Group LLC in the amount of $948,483.11. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2025 Fire Enterprise Funds in an amount not to exceed $948,483.11, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. I have moved this item. Commissioner Wright has seconded the item. Chief?
Chief Benson, Commissioner, this is, will allow us to buy one of those big fire trucks we use to respond to emergencies.
Excellent. What is the lead time on getting one of these? I know that's been a...
Well, Commissioner Chief Benson, this one we will get a little sooner, probably within the next few months. It's already built, so we're already ready to go, but to have one built from finish, from start to finish, these days costs, takes about three years. Absolutely amazing. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Seeing no commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. It looks like all three of us had the opportunity to vote, so let's tally the results.
Don't go anywhere.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, and Bradford. We have three aye votes.
Point of information?
Yes, Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you. And so, Chief Benson, I just want, my constituents want to know, when will the fire station in my district be reconsidered? So I can let them know.
Chief Benson, Fire Department, that item is certainly still on our list of things to do. I have the Public Works Director back behind me, but it comes to a funding issue for sure. So as soon as those funds are available, that is an item that's still on our, on our list to tackle. But I will, I will say that, again, like we said before, the equipment that responds to that area is responding today, and they have ever since the DNX station happened. So the equipment and the manpower is there. The station has not been built, but the response capability is there today, as it always has been. But that is in the queue, once the funding issues are settled.
It's in the queue, is also in the budget, as far as at least one fire station to be built?
Not for next year.
Not for 2026?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll meet with both of you offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. This item received three yes votes, and we'll go down with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Chief. All right. Back to item number two.
Item two is a resolution approving a contract and the issuance of emergency purchase orders between Shelby County Government and AHA Mechanical Contractors LLC totaling $96,000 to provide a temporary chiller for three months located at 157 Poplar and Train U.S., Inc., totaling $113,105 for pairs on the district chiller loop for a total amount not to exceed $209,105. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of the FY 2025 general funds in the amount not to exceed $209,105, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Good morning, Ms. Austin.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services. Item number five, request for approval to contract and for an emergency purchase order with both AHA Mechanical and Train for the replacement of chiller, electrical system, and other components, as well as the installation of a temp chiller. The district loop provide cooling to 157 Poplar along with 150 Washington and 140 Adams, whereas we experienced a major failure around the top of March that created an emergency situation. So in an effort to have as less disruption as possible, we consulted with Purchasing in order to get an emergency PO, as AHA is already a contracted vendor for chiller services. They worked in collaboration with Train, as Train is the only company to manufacture the part. So we are just seeking approval on this item to properly account for what we, what we did.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Seeing no commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. All right. All commissioners have voted. Let's tally the results.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, and Bradford. We have three aye votes.
Thank you. This item will go down with a favorable recommendation. Let's move to item number three.
Item three is a resolution approving a contract between Shelby County Government and Cone, Inc., to provide elevator maintenance and repair services for 22 elevators located at 160 North Main Street, 157 Poplar Avenue, 150 Washington Avenue, 140 Adams Avenue, 1814 Jefferson Avenue, 1060 Madison Avenue, 616 Adams Avenue, and 1075 Mullins Station Road, and approving purchase orders and a check already issued to said vendor in the amount of $74,258.30. This contract will commence upon execution and continue through June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $15,990, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods, with the first year renewal period not to exceed an amount of $65,878.80, and the second year renewal period in the amount not to exceed $67,855.14. This item requires expenditure of fiscal year 2025 general funds in an amount not to exceed $90,248.30, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Wright has seconded the item. Ms. Austin?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services. A contract with Cone, Inc. to render elevator services along with maintenance services for our downtown facility, as well as our facility out east. Such services are needed to ensure the safe transportation of individuals utilizing the elevator. Our request was reviewed and approved by Purchasing, and RFP was issued around September, where we did not receive any responses. It was reissued again. Cone responded, demonstrating their ability to provide the services. This is a pretty standard contract that we have, just so we can attend to those elevator concerns, and we're seeking approval of this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Chair. And so, just a quick question. I understand you had an issue with vendors responding. I was just wondering, is this a local vendor?
Cone is a local vendor.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Wright?
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So my question is, with this maintenance, is it, will this bring those pieces of equipment up to, like, good working order? I know maybe that sounds like a stupid question, but it does seem like we have a lot of issues throughout, at least in this building, and maybe some of the other buildings. Will this just maintain, like, so it says maintenance, I guess repair too, but will this bring those, bring it up to a good standard?
Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services, this is our standard contract for routine maintenance. However, whenever there is a need for modernization of an elevator, that is a part of our CIP project. You spoke specifically of 160, that is an item that we are currently working with Pickering to design for elevator services. It is on the CIP list for construction, I think, next year, if not the following year. So in those cases where there is a need to address major repairs or rebuild, those are considered CIP projects.
Okay. I think, thank you for that. And so, I guess more specifically, does this cover, what all does this cover? Does it cover both the, like, the physical, like, metal pieces, or does it include the circuitry, the electrical, all of the above?
Yes and no. If there is anything outside of the scope of service that we provide, it within the bid, then if it exceeds a certain amount, we will be back before this body. But if there is a need for a rebuild in excess of what's available on the contract, then we will handle those on a case-by-case basis.
I guess I'm trying to get at, so there are some elevators in this building where the circuitry doesn't work, or it doesn't work on one side. Would this get to that issue, or not?
It would. It would get to this issue, just the maintenance of it. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item to a vote. If all commissioners have had the opportunity to vote, let's tally the results.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Bradford, and Morrison. We have four aye votes.
Thank you. This item will go down with a favorable recommendation. Please read item number four.
Item four is a resolution approving contracts between Shelby County Government and Teens and Demoville Mechanical Contracts LLC, AHA Mechanical Contractors LLC, CS3, Inc., and Gentry's Heating and Cooling Mechanical Contractors LLC, to provide routine maintenance, repair, and installation services on HVAC equipment for various Shelby County buildings, and approving purchase orders already issued to said vendors in the amount of $281,080.98. These contracts will commence upon execution and continue through June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $125,000 each, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods in an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually. This item requires expenditure of fiscal year 2025 general funds in an amount not to exceed $500,000, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Ms. Austin?
Thank you, Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services. This item seeks to approve a contract with the four vendors in an effort to continue our operational efficiency of our HVA systems throughout county government. Gentry, AHA, Teens, Demoville, and CS3 will have the responsibility of performing the various installation, maintenance, and repair services. The process was vetted through purchasing, and an RFP was issued to solicit bids from vendors. This was done back in October. Six bids were received, and after an evaluation, four of those vendors showed themselves to be the best overall to provide those services for us. Each vendor will be contracted at $123,025,000 apiece, excuse me, and will be used on a rotating basis. We're seeking approval of this item.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Is anybody else having problems? My system completely shut down. Yes. Commissioner Sugarman, I'm going to let you go ahead. I know you were in the queue. I think I have a question as well when you get done.
Thank you. And so, can you give us some background information of these vendors? Are they local vendors, or for each one?
Yes. All of them are local vendors here in Shelby County.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question. This says through June 30th, 2025. Is that the correct date?
Yes, sir. It is. It is.
I just wanted to make sure. All right. I don't know, maybe we'll do a roll call vote as we're waiting for the system come up. Can we do that? It's back up?
Well, the rule, when the system is not operational, is immediately prior to the vote, in any committee meeting, the chair shall put the question in the form. All those commissioners in favor of the action shall signify by saying aye. All those favors who oppose shall signify by saying nay.
It's odd that you had that ready to go right there by you. All commissioners in favor of this item, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. This will go down with a favorable recommendation.
I'm sorry. I need to make a paper.
Yes, ma'am.
Copy of the vote.
All right. Let me know when you're ready.
Point of information, parliamentarians, so is there an option? Because I was just curious, as opposed to having everyone say aye, can we just do a roll call vote? And that way, it would be easier for the public, as well as the Menace Department to report everybody's name. Is there an option or not?
The rule states, just as Ms. Hobson noted, all those commissioners in favor of an action shall signify by aye. All those commissioners who oppose shall signify by saying nay. So if we want to suspend the rules and do a roll call vote, we can, being that this is at the committee level and we're trying to keep the day moving, I would say let's just stick with what we've got. We don't have a whole lot of people here that seem to be in dissension anyway, so thank you.
Thank you for that information.
of an emergency purchase order between Shelby County Government and CS3, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $63,320, excuse me, $60,232 for the restoration of the air conditioning handling unit and the necessary placement parts in General Sessions 7 courtroom located at the Walter L. Bailey Jr. Criminal Justice Center 201 Poplar Avenue. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of FY 2025 general funds in an amount not to exceed $63,232, sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford, Jr.
Thank you. It appears my system is back up, so I will move the item. Do I have a second? How about a verbal second? Second from Commissioner Morrison. Ms. Austin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services. Our last item is a approval of a contract and emergency purchase order with CS3 for the replacement part needed in our operating system for HVAC services. Unfortunately, in early April, we were challenged with maintaining the existing system and experienced a failure, thus requiring emergency action in order to keep the air circulating within this particular courtroom. We sought the approval with a emergency purchase order through Purchasing Department for the required parts. They have been ordered and installed, and the air has been reestablished within this courtroom. We are just wanting to make our efforts in properly accounting for this procurement. We're seeking approval of this item.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you. And again, same question. Is this a local vendor?
Nicole Austin Administrative Support Services. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not sure the system is fully working yet or not. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll take this item to a vote, and if the screen doesn't come up, we'll do the same thing we did last time. All right. It doesn't appear to be working, at least it's not coming up on my end. So all those in favor of this item, if you signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, this item will go down with a favorable recommendation. We will move to discussion item number seven when the paper vote has been recorded, so give us a few seconds.
Item seven is a discussion item to last approximately 10 minutes. Mental Health Facility Update. Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I am joined here by our Public Works Director, Cliff Norville, and we just wanted to take this time this morning to give you an update on the status of the Shelby County Mental Health Safety and Justice Center. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about it within the last few weeks about, is it happening? What's going on? And so, we knew that we needed to come and check in. Just as a quick review, just want to remind you all of how this project has been developed. We're looking at it from a point of view of, you know, it's a bit of a mix. It's a mix of, you know, 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 it's Okay. If we will read item number seven.
Item seven is a discussion item to last approximately 10 minutes. Mental Health Facility Update. Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I am joined here by Public Works Director Cliff Norville. And we just wanted to take this time this morning to give you an update on the status of the Shelby County Mental Health Safety and Justice Center. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about it within the last few weeks about is it happening? What's going on? And so we knew that we needed to come and check in. Just as a quick review, just want to remind you all of how this project has been developed in terms of the business of it. There were two resolutions that were adopted. The first was for the design of the facility for $2.5 million, and that was in December of 2023. And then we actually had a construction, a C-MAR contract that was adopted for and corrections. There is a building, a Z building, that is being demolished. It will be demolished on Friday. We do have all the information and everything in place for that process to occur. Next slide, please. Just want to make sure that everyone is clear that, you know, Cliff and I have not been sitting by ourselves making decisions about this project. We have been meeting regularly over the last few months with project stakeholders from the mayor's administration. You can see the list of folks there, the CAO's office, Public Works, Community Services, the Public Defender and Corrections. We also consider you all a stakeholder as you allocated the funding for this project. Although you haven't been in the meetings, you are a part of this process. We have included the Shelby County Sheriff in the meetings that we've had. For a while, we were doing them weekly. As we have gotten into these last couple of months, they have been less frequent as we have tried to get all of the designs actually done. And of course, our Attorney General and our consultants, A2H and Flint Co. Cliff is going to give you an update of the building. This is, I think, the fun stuff and let you know more about the design.
As you see, Cliff Norville, Public Works, I'm sorry. As you can see here, we have some elevations. The architect went through the conceptual design and prepared some visuals for us to see what the building will look like. This is an exterior elevation from the, looking from the northeast. And the next slide, please. We'll go through these pretty quickly. This is an east elevation, as if you were standing in the code enforcement parking lot, looking at the new building. And then the next slide is from the southwest elevation, if you were standing back by the Election Commission Warehouse and looking at the site. And so we'll go to the next slide now. This building is located on the site, like I said, due west of the code enforcement building. There were a couple of residences here that were constructed along with the corrections facility 100 years ago. The first building immediately adjacent to code enforcement parking lot was demolished probably 30 years ago. There's a second building that Deputy Young mentioned that was referred to as the Z Building. And it is currently standing, but it is in the way, and so we're going to be demolishing that. We had to go through a process. There were some issues that we had to get resolved with the building, but the wrecking ball is supposed to show up, as I was informed this morning at 7:30. It's supposed to be there at the crack of dawn Friday. And so that will be leveled to create space for this. As you see, we had some issues that we had to address, and we located this building just so there's some utility lines that run diagonally through this particular site. And so the building is located a little bit closer to the street than originally was planned, but it's still in a good configuration. Next slide. To talk about the building itself, I'm going to identify the three major areas. Immediately north, that's kind of the entry, public entry to the building, and that involves some administrative offices for not only the director who will be operating the facility, but also some offices for attorneys who will be coming and also potential staff that will be working with the residents. Next slide. The center section is really the infrastructure for the building. We have functions like providing food service, laundry, storage for the residences, they are there, and then some infrastructure for the building like electrical and HVAC. And the final slide, the next slide is going to be actually the residential area where the participants are sleeping and also undergoing treatment. As we said when we originally began this project, we were, had a target of 60 beds for this facility, and the design team has been able to accomplish that mission. If you count the individual bedrooms there, you will see room for 60. Some of the bedrooms have double occupancy, but there are 60 beds in this facility. In each one of the pods, for lack of a better term, you will see either housing for 14 or 16 individuals. There will be a large day room. And if you look, I wish I had a pointer, but if you look in the center of the two pods, you will see an area that's kind of open. That is actually exterior space, so they can go out and enjoy our Memphis weather. Whether they like it or not, they can enjoy humidity or they can enjoy freezing temperatures at their leisure. And then in the center of those, in between the two pods, there are some smaller rooms, and those are rooms for consulting with their attorney. In the very center, where you are circling right now, thank you, Ms. Marie, those are larger multi-use rooms, which will be used for treatment and sessions. And there are some small conference rooms and medium and larger conference rooms there, as well as some staffing and areas for medication and what pharmaceuticals that may be used in the treatment facility. And so those are the primary locations and functions within the building, as the design stands right now. And so where do we go from here? Last slide. The schedule is, as this shows, as a matter of fact, the design team issued the first early release package last week. That early release package goes to the C-MAR, and it involves the earthwork, storm drainage, and erosion control. And they are going to be enlisting subcontractors to help them with that right now. I know ABE S is part of their team, and they were brought onto the project specifically for the earthwork. The next early release project will be toward the end of July, and that will be concrete, steel, plumbing, electrical, infrastructure, with the 100% deliverable in September of '25. Now, the construction phase is scheduled to go from this July until the, near the end of fiscal, or 2026, and that substantial completion date that you see there is December of 2026.
Thank you all. I really appreciate this. I know we've had some previous items, and there's been concern of where this project is and if it's moving forward and that kind of stuff. So it's exciting to hear that we'll be doing some demo as early as Friday. So that's wonderful to hear. I don't see any commissioners in the queue.
I'm manager of the front.
Oh, this is wonderful. All right. I don't know what order people came in, so I'm just gonna start with Commissioner Sugarman and work my way back this way.
Okay. So this is a commission-driven project, having said that. So have you all already broken ground? Or, okay, then when are you breaking ground? Make sure the commissions are invited. And then also, you all had a list of stakeholders, and I also wanted to just, you know, mention that the specialty court judges were also, you know, involved in the process. And I was wondering, you all talked about the different spaces, and I love the green space, because that's one thing that they wanted. But is there a place for them to have court? For example, that was one of the big issues when we went to Davidson County, they also had a space where the different judges could come and have court there. So I'm just curious about those two things.
Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. So yes, to your first question, you all will be included in any groundbreaking that has not happened. It should be in the next couple of weeks, months, and you will be there. I'll jump to the question about the mental health court, or any court being there. We were, we did have a cap of $18.6 million, and part of the process that we've gone through is to try to get the best facility built with the limited amount of money. I know 18 million is a lot of money, but when you start building a facility, it, we learned that we couldn't get all the things that we may have wanted. And so what you see represented is what we could afford with $18.6 million and staying true to the 60 beds that we discussed initially. Now, what we have talked about with our designer is just making sure that we have room to grow in the future. As the program gets going and as some new priorities come for that work, there could be the opportunity to expand the space, but it would require an additional investment.
Okay. Then I'm gonna follow up, if I can, because I just recall you all, or the administration pulling back some of the funding sources for a million dollars, and we asked specifically would this be enough money? And so again, and I'm very curious, because you'd asked a question about the judges being involved in the process, because that was one of the main things that they saw when it was the Davidson County facility, is that the judges were able to come in, you know, just like at J-WAC, whatever it's called, you know, the space for judges. And so that is a concern.
So, I mean, that may take a longer discussion. I am not, we have not had the judges involved in the design of the facility. This particular facility has been designed to divert folks that are being brought to jail before they even go to court. So the conversation really has involved the sheriff's office and in the future will involve mental health treatment providers. We have not included them because we didn't want to get into the place where we were giving anyone an unfair advantage. But because this was pre-adjudication, the, quite honestly, we have not had the judges at the table in the design.
I would like to ask that you all request, that you all include the judges, because again, this is something that they're on the, at the ground. And so they are, they do understand that in order for the individuals to be seen, adjudicated, they have to be stabilized. And that was the whole rationale behind this whole facility. And so I'm just requesting that you include the judges in moving forward. I understand the fairness and all this kind of stuff, but again, the intent and the vision, you know, of the commissioners and the judicial system was to make sure that we can take the, you know, as many people out of 201 Poplar and stabilize them and have them adjudicated. So again, I'm requesting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. My screen is working. I've got Commissioner Mills in the queue next.
Thank you. My question, with the stakeholders that you consulted in building this, was there a mental health expert at the table?
So we included the Division of Community Services that has a behavioral health unit. And so Tiffany Hilson, who is the deputy administrator of that section and is a clinician, was a part of it. Again, we did not include just our call-out names. We didn't include places like Alliance or other places, because when this thing becomes operational, it is possible that we will need to contract with someone. We did not want any, just any problems later on.
Okay. My next question that leads me to my next question. How much is this gonna cost to operate, once it's built?
I do not have the answer to that question.
And that's been my question all along, before this was even approved. How much is it gonna cost? How many employees? Who's gonna operate it? If it's under the sheriff, but he's not required to operate it, is he gonna pull out? I mean, I have so many unanswered questions, and y'all are just talking about building the building. And I'm, I've got a lot of questions concerning that, once it's built. How are we gonna fund this to utilize it?
Absolutely. Dorcas Young Griffin, Deputy CAO. So I can't answer the question of how much it will cost. That is something that, you know, is top of mind for me in thinking about operations. I can tell you that it will take an additional investment to run the facility, but I am not clear on what that is at this point.
And then I'm questioning, why didn't we partner with Alliance to just handle all of this? And we could have built two new fire stations instead. I mean, I'm just, like, the boat's already sailed. I get that. But these are just my frustrations looking forward with this. So those are my two questions leading on that. But it's good to see you. It's been a minute.
It's good to see you, too. And we will continue to give updates, and I do know that operations of this matters. We don't want just a beautiful building and people don't get the help that they need. And so this has been the big push with Cliff and I to just start the building because of the ARPA deadlines, because most of this is paid for by ARPA funding. But very, very soon, we will be talking about the operational questions.
Because I just, if we can't afford to operate it, we're gonna have an 18-plus million-dollar storage facility, basically, which I know we need to. So that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My screen shows Commissioner Wright in the queue, and Commissioner Wright, you were just testing the system. Commissioner Lowry, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. I didn't want to skip you and people start. I don't know. I think there's a rift between us. Thank you all for the presentation. I would invite you guys to come back maybe in August or September, so you can give us another update, and maybe at that time, we'll have a little bit better of an understanding of what the operational cost is gonna look like, and then we can present back. So thank you all for being here today, and this concludes Public Works. All right. I don't see Commissioner Avant is here yet, so is the vice chair.
We did four and five.
Yes. Yep. Everything has been handled. I don't see Commissioner Avant here, and so is the vice chair. I will call to order committee number five, Land Use, Planning, Transportation, and Codes. If we could read the first item.
Item one is a resolution pursuant to Chapter 9.6 of the Unified Development Code of the County of Shelby and the City of Memphis, Tennessee, granting a planned development for land located at Zero Forest Hill Irene Road, known as case number PD 2025-001CO. Sponsored by Commissioner Shante Avant. This item is referred back to committee in June 2nd, 2025, Commission Meeting.
Hello.
My screen is not working. Good morning, Commissioner Avant. I'm gonna hand it over to you. We've been having multiple technical difficulties, so I wish you luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradford. Is there a motion? Is there something I need to read since we're? A motion by Commissioner Sugarman and a second by Commissioner Bradford? Okay. Mr. Ragland, presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Brett Ragsdale with the Division of Planning and Development. We have had this case before you a couple of times and had presentations. The applicant is here, and my understanding is they've had further communication with Commissioner Sugarman, and I believe have answered some of the questions. So we're here to answer any questions, or if you need a presentation, I can give ours or the applicant can give a presentation.
Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Chair. And so I just want to say, yes, you answered some of my questions, and I do have some follow-up questions, but we can do that through email and probably tomorrow. But thank you so much for those responses.
Seeing no other lights, if we could prepare the screen for a vote? All commissioners in favor of the action shall signify by saying aye. All those commissioners who are opposed shall signify by saying nay. If we could get a roll call vote. Okay. Aye. Are there any opposed?
Will you give me a second, please, to write this down so that we'll have a copy of the vote?
We just have this.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Wright, Bradford, Brooks, Lowry, and Avent. We have six aye votes.
That, uh, item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. That ends committee five, land use, planning, transportation and codes. I don't see any of the other, the chair or co-chairs, so I'll call committee six, uh, education. It is a, uh, Commissioner Paul Maitre, if you could read the item into the record?
Yes, ma'am. Item one is a discussion item to last approximately fifteen minutes. First eight pre-K, twenty-three through twenty-four annual reporting and twenty-four through twenty-five Q two report. Dr. Candace Thomas presenting.
Good morning, Ms. Thomas. Is there a presentation?
Good morning, yes, there is. We can do the annual report first? Yes. Okay. Do you have it in a PowerPoint or no?
Ms. Thomas, while they're preparing the presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to uh, Chair Vice Chairman Bibbs. Vice Chairman Bibbs for this committee.
Okay. We'll use it. We'll use the document that you pulled up. The document that you first pulled up, we can go over that. Okay. Thank you, good morning. Um, I'm excited this morning to report out on two things related to pre-K. First is our annual report from the last school year, so this is twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. You have a one-page document in front of you that is just a high-level overview of the report. As you can see, we, last year, we had fifteen pre-K operators in our program, including Memphis Shelby County Schools and Bartlett City Schools. We had overall last year, an incredible enrollment rate of ninety-four percent. And you all remember the struggles that we've had across the city and the country related to enrollment, especially with pre-K in the early years. And now we're just seeing more and more awareness and interest in pre-K across Shelby County. And so we had ninety-four percent enrollment last year. Our intended attendance looked really good as well, so we had eighty-seven percent attendance. That means that students attended school eighty percent or more days. And so we had eighty percent of our, eighty-seven percent of our students attending eighty percent or more days, which is also really, really good news. So I hope you feel really proud of that. If you flip over the one, the document, you'll see that a hundred percent of the teachers did receive one-on-one monthly instructional coaching, which you know, that really helps improve quality of instruction in our classrooms. And you remember that our program includes family engagement to help support families with any services that they're asking for, to make sure that their children receive the highest quality of care. And uh, last year, the major family engagement needs that families had, they wanted to be advocates for their children's education, they wanted help with kindergarten transition, they wanted more connection to the community and more community services, um, and they wanted to improve their parent-child relationship. In terms of the pre-K growth that we, that we saw last year, we have really good news to share and we hope that you all are proud of this. In this program, sixty-two percent of our students outperformed their peers on the assessment that we use, which assesses them across seven developmental domains. And we're really proud to share that our students and their families and everybody who cares for them, that fifty-eight percent of them scored kindergarten ready. That is a really big deal. It's a really, really big deal. So we have a lot to celebrate from your investments for the last school year. The next presentation is the quarter two report from this school year. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay, so this report is for this school year, so I just reported on the annual report from last year. And so that's why we had some of the kindergarten readiness data and the overall growth data. And this is for this school year and our quarter two. Um, so you'll see the first few slides are our standard slides about the role of First State Memphis, um, what our early care and education system looks like here in Memphis and Shelby County, and why investing in early years are so important for young children and for the community. And this report reflects October fourteenth to December twentieth, so right before the end of the school year. And as you know, this school year, the county commission invested nine point five million dollars in this program. Um, and you, and you, you know that we are requesting next year eleven point five million dollars for this program, and that's to expand the number of classrooms and children that we're trying to reach. And we'll have a actual budget for you in the fall, once all of our, our numbers are finalized for, for school year twenty-five, as we always do. Um, this slide, actually, thank you, Ms. Thomas, this slide shows you just comparing this school year FY twenty-five and next school year. Again, seeing that we're requesting eleven point five for pre-K, as well as the county commission invests in other aspects of early learning. You also invest in the next Memphis program, which is a childcare, um, uh, childcare program through Porterleaf. And if, and also to remind you, you also provide the early Head Start match. Early Head Start is a federal program. It requires a local match and you have been providing that as well. And so in fiscal year twenty-six, um, in total, your early childhood investments would be twelve point five million dollars. Okay, so for quarter two of this school year, as we always show you, we spent about three point six million dollars across the city and county investments, and that's about forty percent of the total budget. And as always, ninety-one percent of those funds go directly to salary for teachers and other personnel. You remember that this school year, we have been increasing our investment per child and that means that the more we spend per child, the higher quality programs they're receiving. And so we have steadily through your investments, increased the per child amount in this program as we have done this year as well. And you remember that, um, that this year, we are still under income eligibility. And so for this program, our income eligibility is seventy-eight hundred dollars a month for a family of four and one hundred percent of the families met that eligibility. But you passed pre-K for all, April fourteenth, so congratulations. And so next year, as long as the city passes it on Tuesday, we will have no income eligibility. Yes, big yes, congratulations. We're so excited, the community is so excited about that. Uh, so this slide just reminds you that your investments are almost in every community across Memphis and Shelby County. And uh, the next slide just reminds you about the investments in your district specifically. So we tried to personalize the report for you, just to give you a face to a family in our program. So this is um, Mom Lenikia with her children and she really wanted a high-quality kindergarten readiness education for her kids and she needed it to be um, affordable or tuition-free. And uh, uh, we're spotlighting her because of, with her and her niece and nephew, um, because their story is pretty typical for Memphis and Shelby County. Parents wanting a high-quality education for their young children and uh, Lenikia was able to get that through Circles of Success Learning Academy. So the next slide features them again, but it overall talks about our enrollment. So last school year, we were at ninety-four percent enrollment across the school year and in quarter two of this year, we're at ninety-three percent enrollment. So we, we should be meeting the enrollment, if not meeting or exceeding where we were last year. And that compares to last year, quarter two last year, we were at eighty-seven percent enrollment. So we're seeing, um, we're seeing a lot of improvement and really know that families are working hard to make sure their kids are enrolled. And same thing for attendance, so this quarter, quarter two, ninety-two percent of our students met the attendance goal and that's a record for this program. Thank you. And again here, teachers are receiving their instructional coaching monthly. We hope to expand coaching next year, um, depending on city and county dollars with a, a program called Lena Grow and we can tell you more about that, but it also involves coaching, um, and a, a device in which teachers wear to really see how much they're interacting um, verbally with young children and um, depending on, on investments, we may be able to invest in that next year. So as we wrap up, again, family wellness is a, an important component of this. So you see that a hundred percent of the families who asked for family engagement personnel help did receive it. And you see here, some of the common referrals to Church Health, Rise Memphis, the YMCA, the Crocs Center, the Alliance, highlighting again Circles of Success, their amazing program and uh, the teachers in that program, as well as uh, Mom Lenikia, um, giving a hug to her three-year-old. Okay, so again, in terms of our kindergarten readiness threshold here, we see that um, we're, our students are doing really well, that we're, we ha, we are um, sixty-two percentile points on the Brigance Assessment, which is an assessment that we implemented a few years ago across all of our partners. And we're seeing incredible academic growth this year, um, and really, just really proud of and impressed with all the babies and what they're doing in their classrooms and we hope that you're proud too. And then finally, on the next slide is a QR code. We're in enrollment season right now. Programs across the county are enrolling for the school year starting in August. We have a prekmemphis.com website, you may remember. You can also access it through First State Memphis's website to spread the word around um, enrollment. So you invested again, five hundred thousand dollars um, for the early Head Start match. That's a federal program, it requires a local match. And then county commission also invested five hundred thousand dollars to support uh, childcare quality across Shelby County. And so I'll just speak to that, cause it all relates to the early childhood system that we're building. So um, for early Head Start, your five hundred thousand dollars, fifty-six percent of that went to personnel and salaries, thirty-two percent went to program supplies and twelve percent was um, for the admin fee for Porterleaf. And in total, the federal investment in this program is seven point two million dollars. So you'll see on the next slide, the map of the Porterleaf providers for early Head Start. And a reminder, early Head Start is infants and toddlers, so they start about six weeks and they go to three years old. And you see here, um, the providers across the community that have early Head Start classrooms and investments. And early Head Start has a very low income threshold. So you have to be prenatal, the age is prenatal to three. And if you're a family of four, you have to make thirty-one thousand dollars or less. So these investments and a family of four making thirty-one thousand dollars or less for their children to have a high-quality early learning experience is really, really important for those, for that child's outcomes. And early Head Start did see ninety-one percent enrollment in quarter two. And they also saw that ninety-five percent of their children were up to date on preventive and primary care. And early Head Start is not just about quote-unquote "education," but whole child wellness so that they could be learning in those early learning environments. So the families received wraparound services, just like in pre-K across the county, and educators also received instructional support, just like pre-K across the county. And parents are saying that their children are becoming more confident. One parent said, "Every day is a bright spot. The staff members are always readily available and ready to care for my kids each and every day. Everyone and everything is awesome." My son's teachers were friendly and always communicated regarding anything important pertaining to my son. So parents are sharing some, um, their perspectives on their children being involved in this program. And then next Memphis, also at Porterleaf, you know, it's a, an invest, your investment was to help increase childcare quality in this community and we have talked about the quality needs across early learning and this is one of your investments to do so. I also emailed some of you over the last week. First State Memphis is launching a year-long professional development series using your investments for early learning providers. We have space for up to a hundred and fifty early learning providers in the, in the county. And as of my last understanding, we had a hundred and ten people enrolled. So we are getting folks, we're trying to improve the quality of care and that's what Next Memphis is doing as well. So you invested fifty, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in Next Memphis and sixty-one percent of that money went to salaries and benefits, a twenty-six percent operations and fourteen percent indirect costs. You can see on the next slide where the Next Memphis providers are. Again, these are private childcare providers across Shelby County. And uh, they have several tiers of programs in there and several tiers within the program. Some childcare providers are receiving like sort of high dosage, um, hands-on support and some providers are not, depending on what tier they're in. But you, we see that in quarter two, approximately two thousand children are served from, um, from the Next Memphis program and from your investments. And the, the model is, if you remember, is that if we improve operations of a childcare provider, it'll improve outcomes for kids. And so you'll see that the childcare providers are saying that they are seeing some savings. They're seeing savings in curriculum cost, they are better using, um, more effectively using their dollars for classroom costs, um, they're seeing savings related to educational coaches, et cetera, et cetera. And so we know from other places around the country, when you invest in the backbone, then child, child outcomes are stronger um, for children and their families. Next Memphis families are also receiving wraparound services, not to the same degree as early Head Start or pre-K. We will inquire about that at First State Memphis and you see that they are receiving instructional support. And so overall, your investments are in pre-K, childcare and early Head Start. We have included, um, we have asked for um, increased investments for next year for pre-K. We, your, we, we, we have asked that your heads, your early Head Start and your Next Memphis investments stay the same for next year. And um, we hope that you're really proud of the, um, of the results of the kids across the community.
Thank you, um, Ms. Thomas, uh, for your presentation. I real, our screens aren't working, but then I also see Commissioner Thornton has arrived, so I will actually hand over this committee to her. And I think Commissioner Sugarman is raising her hand to be in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Sugarman, you're recognized.
So I'm so proud of the commission for supporting universal childcare. And so I just wanna put on record, you know, that we need to also reach out to our counterparts of the city council, so they'll do the same thing.
So they'll do the same thing. And you stated their voting when? Was it Tuesday of next week?
Tuesday, the 24th.
Okay. And so I know individuals have reached out to me regarding the moral budget. And so I'm asking you all, since you all are very diligently calling us, to support early childcare. You do the same thing on the city side. And we are focusing and supporting through funding, Pre-K, and early childhood. And I love the fact that you also have wraparound services. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. Just curious about the, what I'm reading about is it Head Start or Early Head Start, where the winning bid has not been chosen or so forth. Can you speak to what's happening with that? And whether or not your organization is seeking that designation or would?
So the Head Start recompetition opened in January. We know that two local organizations applied, as well as two national organizations, applied to work in Memphis. So there were four for Memphis and Shelby County. There were four for this community. I happen to know that we should be hearing any day now. We've gotten some heads up from folks at the national level that we should be hearing in this community any day about the Head Start investment. And so we're waiting to hear. First State Memphis did not apply as for Head Start. We have said that we will work with whomever is the Head Start awardee. So if that awardee is Porterleaf, if it's Memphis Shelby County Schools, or if it happens to be one of the other national organizations, which we would rather see the awardee be local, we would work with them. But we did not apply as an organization.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are any other commissioners in queue? Commissioner Brooks?
Good morning. Thank you. You may have talked about this, but, and I apologize if you did. So who's evaluating the Head Start applications?
That happens at the federal level. The Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay. And who is here locally that they're responding to?
So they would be responding to Memphis Shelby County Schools's application or Porterleaf's application?
I heard you say something about national organizations.
Yes, there's a couple of national organizations. So there are national organizations that always, that sort of their job is to find where there's a Head Start grant recompetition. And then they apply. This has happened, when I used to live in Chicago, it happened. You know, I'm from New York City, it happened. So there's just companies or organizations that apply for the grant. But typically, Head Start at the national level tries to make sure the grant is awarded to a local grantee.
Okay, that's my concern. I was about to ask, are you aware of any instances where they have awarded Head Start to, I mean, you know, some foreign organization?
No, they will, 99% likely award to a local grant, a local applicant.
Has there been, well, they've always awarded local. But is there a process for appeal? If there's a body, a legislative body or a community organization that is dissatisfied with the selection?
I actually don't know the answer to that, but we can look into it and get back to you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners in queue? Okay, Director Thomas, some questions about, as things are changing at the federal level, how is that impacting what you're seeing in your ability to do your work here locally?
Yes, many things are changing at the federal level. And across early learning, there has been, first, a lot of stress. A lot of early learning providers are worried that those who, because many get federal dollars. So there's a lot of federal pass-through to support early learning, particularly Head Start and Early Head Start. Those all come from the Department of Health and Human Services. So there is a lot of worry that we will see a decrease in investments in early learning because of what's happening at the federal level. Also, early learning is impacted by everything that's impacted in a child's life. So if Medicaid gets cut, Medicaid funding not only supports health of an individual family, but Medicaid also covers federally qualified health centers. Medicaid also covers food support in public schools. So the ripple effect of one policy that may sound like it's one thing, but really does impact children and families across the board. So we are expecting that there will be less investments in families and children from the federal level. And it does have a really big impact on what's happening here. So we may see, if, you know, if there's a decrease in Early Head Start or Head Start, we will have a huge childcare need in this community. Early Head Start and Head Start serves more than 3,000 babies. So if there is a decrease in federal investment in that, 3,000 babies and their families will need access to childcare in our community. That's one example of what could happen, given the federal landscape right now.
And so with that being said, how, I'm assuming that the state's role in potentially closing the gap becomes a bigger discussion? Have we, or where are we? Before we go too far into this, I would like to just ask that at your next quarterly report, that you actually present a report to forecast like what shifts are happening and what the impact will be. As we're watching these headlines about things that are happening at the federal level, I do think that here locally, we need to have more proactive conversations about how to recalibrate, how to just assess and just move forward. And so we're eerily silent about things that are major shifts. And the things that you're saying could be catalytic in a place like Memphis. And so we just need to know what that looks like in terms of dollars in need and just data. And so if you could kickstart one of the first discussions that I've seen actually trying to do this type of analysis, that would be helpful with your next reporting. Beyond that, you've mentioned this in previous committees. What is the total investment needed to fund universal Pre-K here locally?
So for next year?
Not just for next year. What is that all-in figure? If we were today, as we approve the budget, to put a figure into the budget, what would it be?
A figure into the budget for next year or?
If we were to fully fund and provide universal Pre-K to all families in need, what would the figure be?
The figure would be upwards of $50 million.
Okay. And then it's my understanding that you've broken that $50 million investment over a period of time. What time period?
Yeah, so we have a five-year implementation plan and a five-year budget. But in five years, that'll get us to about $25 million. But we know to really do this and do it well, it will cost, it's a big lift for the community.
And is that just a lift that is incumbent upon having the funds? Or is there something else? If you have the funds, if we had $50 million committed today, could we actually roll out the program?
If we had $50 million committed today, we would be able to. But one of the major challenges, which we've talked about over time, is the quality of care. So we would really have to build out the quality within the community. So our investments would actually not only go to Pre-K expansion and making sure families have access, but making sure that every program in our community meets developmental needs of families and young children. And that would be where a lot of the investment would go. Because you don't want to invest in a program that is not strong.
And just as a final question, today, you're going to present a budget amendment. That's going to happen. How much will it be for?
The budget amendment is $2 million. So right now, you're at $9.5 million for Pre-K. And we're asking next year to go to $11.5 million.
And we talk about the $50 million, is the $11.5 a part of the $50 million?
Yes.
Okay. So are we, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that with the reappraisal and the opportunity that we have with the certified tax rate being lower, there's a real opportunity here for us to be able to make a sizable investment by increasing where we set the tax rate. And I think that there's no better investment than Pre-K. So this $2.1 million, is it a modest, like a conservative ask? Or how do we take advantage of the opportunity to be able to get the right figure in place?
The $2 million is a conservative ask because we want to be respectful of understanding the many, many needs and competing resources in the community. If there was an opportunity to increase, we would obviously be wanting to talk about that. But to me, it was what we projected, given the history and what we know about revenue streams.
And can you just say what that ambitious ask would be this budget season?
Could I, could you?
I think, Commissioner Thornton, we'll get a chance in Budget Committee, I think, to discuss this a little more. So we can maybe give Dr. Thomas a chance to sort of think through what that looks like. I know we've gotten the five-year plan that has, on average, about a one and a half to $2 million increase per year. It's probably about $7.5 million over where it is today, over that total period of time. But I think we can dive into that more in Budget.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, any other commissioners in queue? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your time today, and we'll see you here shortly. This adjourns Committee Number Six.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call to order Committee Seventeen, Workforce Development. Bumitarian, please read item number one.
Item one is an ordinance second reading and ordinance amending Article Four, Division Three, Section Two dash two thirty-one of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, creating a procurement initiative to incentivize apprenticeship programs for construction vendors in Shelby County, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Brittany Thornton. This item was deferred in May 28, 2025 Committee Meeting.
This item has been moved by myself, seconded by Commissioner Wright. And so before I go on, I just want to say this on record. Starting July 1st, the county commissioners will not have a counsel, an attorney. I have sent three ordinances up to the county attorney's office a month ago, one of which is a joint.
All right, we will start Committee Number One, Budget and Finance. Commissioner Wright, you have a point of order?
Yeah, point of order, Madam Chair. I just, can someone speak to where we're at with technology? This is going to be a very long and aggravating day. And if we could take a pause to fix it, if that's possible? Or if not, if someone could speak to what the process needs to be so we can have an orderly meeting today?
It's my understanding that the IT has been working on it and still having issues. We're going to try rebooting the system altogether at 10 o'clock. And if it's okay, I'll read the votes. And that way, the public will know what's going on too.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Commissioner Wright, this is an answer question. I think it is 9:25 now. We know that we have a break at 10. I actually was just back there asking the same question. So, and Madam Clark has just given you the response I was given. All right, we will try to do this. And I'm going to be honest, I'm going to try my best to see who hands. If you raise your hand first, be able to capture that the best way I can. Madam Clark, can you read item number one, please?
Item one is an ordinance third reading. Ordinance fixing the tax rate for Shelby County, Tennessee, at blank dollars for tax year 2025, fiscal year 2026. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs and Chairman Michael Whaley. This item was deferred in May 28, 2025 Committee Meeting.
This item was moved by Commissioner Wright, a seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. And I think at this point, do we have a presentation? Deputy Director Thompson, you did mention in subcommittee that we received the letter, but we are now officially in committee. So I think you need to make that statement on record for, not only for record, but for the listening public.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shep Accounting Government. We provided the certified tax rate resolution to your office. We were trying to get those passed out. That's what I was just doing, so that we can put that on the record as well.
You have to designate and actually say what it states. We don't have a copy of it.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shep Accounting Government. I was hoping to have that read and then we could talk about it. I'm happy to state right now what that says. The certified tax rate is set at 2.6933. That's 2.6933.
Commissioner Morrison, you're in the queue.
In the past, I believe we filled in the blank with the certified tax rate as a starting point. So I move that.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll second, because I got questions.
All right, for the purposes of discussion, Commissioner Morrison made the motion. Commissioner Ford seconded, and we're now in discussion mode. So Deputy Director Thompson?
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shep Accounting Government. That would be the normal process. First, the certified tax rate resolution needs to be read upon the minutes and voted on. Then it can be added into the resolution that you currently have before you.
Thank you. I think that then I would move that we go in that order and so that the public knows clearly what the flat rate is. You know, keeping the tax rate the same would be.
I know the item was properly motioned. And second, I don't remember if it was accepted without objection. If it was not?
We're in discussion.
Okay. So that was not accepted without objection. Okay. So then, would you like to withdraw your motion? Or would you just like to, because I guess you can't entertain both that item and this motion?
I can postpone my motion while we read the first resolution in.
Madam Budget Chair, if I may, just because, I agree, we do need to accept first the recertified tax rate, and then we go to the tax rate ordinance. While we're, I'm not sure where that is, but we need that. Okay? So while we're getting that, just to go to the discussion on the tax rate itself, and this is where Commissioner Ford may have a question. But I'd like to just make sure we're clear about this when we do get to that item in the debate on what to fill in. And I'll ask Attorney Ingram to weigh in as well. Because as we're aware, if the tax rate that is set in the ordinance is higher, if it exceeds the recertified tax rate, there must be adequate public notice given to be able to approve that. Okay? So that would mean, and I would, again, I want to defer to Attorney Ingram, that action taken today in committee could constitute public notice only if the number that's put in the tax rate ordinance is higher than the recertified tax rate. If that's the case, a notice between now and Monday should be sufficient to consider it. But I just want to make sure everyone is clear about that in terms of the need to fill in the blanks today. But Attorney Ingram, can you just either confirm or let us clarify that to make sure we understand the implications of a committee vote on the tax rate ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Marcy Ingram, County Attorney's Office. If the body exceeds the certified tax rate, you just have to provide the public with notice of that. And the mayor would send an affidavit or publication to the state within 30 days of that. And you could have that hearing on Monday. That would be sufficient time when the agenda is published on Friday for the meeting on. That would be sufficient time when the agenda is published on Friday, for the meeting on Monday, that the body plans to exceed the certified tax rate.
Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, and thank you, Chair. And so I also want to say this, and this does deal with the tax rate, because whether we keep it the same or move it up, we have to make sure, this is more so a comment and then a question, make sure that whatever the tax rate is, it covers what the, you know, our amendments. And so I would like for you to state, before we go through all of these amendments, what exact, where are we at as far as the total amount of amendments? Because whatever it is, unless we start deducting, okay, we're going to have to increase the tax rate. So what is the total dollar amount that we're at now, as far as these amendments go? When I spoke to you yesterday, I believe it was 126, 149, 320 shortfall. Because these are the amendments that we totaled up so far.
Michael Thompson, Deputy, oh.
Yes, sir.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shelby County Government.
As far as the amendments go, we have to be able to fund it. And so I just want the public to know, it may be at this rate, it might be at a higher rate, okay? I just want to put that out there. So as we go through the amendments, people will understand, and the public, you know, especially me, how I vote and why. Because in the bottom line, we have to have a balanced budget. That's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Thank you. I need the elected trustee up here, please. And I think I know where my colleague was going with the motion, because this commissioner has not and will not go and support anything above the certified tax rate, which you and I agree, Commissioner Morrison, is not a cut. If your bill was $1,000 now arbitrarily, a 26933, your bill will be the same. So it's not a cut. Unfortunately, we have media outlets that will roll with a lie, unfortunately. To the elected trustee, and I disagree with the CFO, we use your tried and true figures and numbers and trending, the proposed budget had a hold of 9.5 million dollars. My question is, in that same incomplete proposed budget, would you see it fit that the page that deals with the penny value as well as the rate, it would need to be changed, even though the money would still be the same coming in? Because we were at 273 whatever, and the penny did not match what you stated. So with this new certified rate, would the penny value go up, and would those changes need to be reflected on that page in the proposed budget?
Virginia Newman County Trustee, the penny value is different based on my forecast, based on the new certified rate. Also, the forecast has been adjusted due to a change in the assessors' suggested appeals allowance.
Right.
So there is not still a 9.5 million dollar...
For clarity, if the administration uses the trustee's new figures, there will not be a hole. That was there before.
That was there before.
Correct, okay. Just want that for the record. To Ms. Ingram through the chair.